Kind of the situation. Mic check, one, two. Good morning, good evening, good afternoon. Hold up, wait a minute. Okay. Now, uh. Like, uh, entire screen or the entire window? Uh, entire screen, I guess, entire screen, I guess, that. Because I keep on recording, um, the wrong thing. If you guys, uh, saw that, like, I recorded like a blank screen, so I redid it. So what are we doing today? Um, since we're recording, let us go over, um, I already put a practice quiz, uh, for chapter thirteen on quizzes. Um, and where do you find that? So if you look here, and let's go with the student view. If you look in Bio 111, the lecture part, you scroll down and there's quizzes. And then you have a chapter thirteen practice quiz, twenty items. And I made it a little bit spicy. Because, uh, you're a good group, right? Uh, I think you guys, uh, already figured out the secret sauce. Uh, what was class average, ninety-five last quiz, so, uh, that means what? It's definitely skewed to the right, you guys are doing what you're supposed to be doing, which is good. Right? Um, so let us now look at the questions. And let's break them all down. And also show you how. So I'm going into announcements, uh. Chapter thirteen study material, and of course, the, the question back. Now admittedly, I think I downloaded the LPN batch of questions, but doesn't matter because it still gives an insight on, um, uh, some of your, uh, some of the things, uh, that I could do, but most likely will do. So let's look at the, uh, let's look at the first ten and give you guys about a couple of minutes, and you can fast forward through this part if you're looking at the video. Um, let's do one to ten and, uh, look at it as if it was a real exam, and I'll give you guys, uh, four minutes. Don't get out a scrap piece of paper or. Now, we're gonna modify these, but like I said, I think there's a little. Um, do, 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 modules.
Are you okay?
Okay, so, um, you can look at it later, because we're also, I'm also gonna be, uh, uh, kind of, uh, reviewing or taking apart chapter thirteen. So, uh, be totally silent. Okay, that's around the four-ish minute mark, so let's do our analysis like we always do. And remember our protocol, when we read the question, what are we doing? We're highlighting what we want, right? Either in our mind or physically on the paper or whatever. So which of the following glands are in your cervical area? So first of all, we have to remember cervical area is where? In your neck. So cervical. Where is thyroid in my cervix? Not cervix down there, but up here, cervical area, is thyroid in my neck? Yes. Is the pineal gland in my neck? Now, where's your pineal gland? In the brain area. Where's your pancreas? It's in your abdominal area, uh, left upper quadrant. And of course ovaries are in your, um, uh, pelvic area. So. These things are, uh, examples of how I could take, remember that one slide that had the picture of where all the, uh, where all the organs were? I could take something visual and make it a, uh, a physical question. Right? And of course, if your patient is complaining about what? About a growth in their neck, you're gonna start thinking about, and they're having, uh, metabolic issues like a thyroid, right? Um, and the classic is, um. Any cardiac thing that we pick up in the emergency room, we always do a thyroid profile or thyroid panel. When you see the word panel, it means what? Everything pertaining to that thing. So what do we know about the thyroid, right? We definitely know TSH affects it, right? You already know that what's in the thyroid, T3, T4, and calcitonin. So will those be the tests on a thyroid panel? Yes. So when you're in your laboratory classes, do you have to memorize panels? No. We go, yeah, yeah, shaking, yes, indirectly. But if you know your anatomy, why should I memorize it? Same thing with your lipid panel. You know lipids are what? Triglycerides, fatty acids, and cholesterol. So do I have to memorize what's on a lipid panel? No, I don't, because I know my anatomy, physiology. And then the next thing you just have to add is what? The numbers. Which by the way, just, just because those numbers or reference values are on the lab report, a good nurse knows the reference value. So that when they hear the number, they know what? Oh, that's normal, that's abnormal. And abnormals have to be reported what? Immediately. Right? And whose job is that? Your job. I don't really see, or your DNP doesn't really see the labs as a whole. Those, uh, they only see what? The abnormals. Because just like what we're doing here, do I care about all the questions that I got right? No. I only care about the questions that I got wrong. Remember, be the, be that positive pessimist. That's what medical professionals do all day. I may, I maybe make fun of my mother, which is very nitpicky, very fault finding, but that's her job for the last fifty-some odd years. Finding the thing that's wrong so they can do what? Fix it. The problem is, she thinks I'm wrong and that I need fixing. And that's a problem. How about the glands that are your gonads? Right? So first of all, again, a double jumper. What's your gonads? I want you to think what? Sexual. So what's sexual? FSH, LH. And if you remember that chart, it goes, what is FSH and LH? A follicle stimulating hormone. And also luteinizing hormone, they affect what? Ovaries and testes. And doesn't that look like a beautiful both A and B question? Which of the following are gonads? A, ovaries, B, testes, C, both, D, neither. It goes, uh, what will FSH and LH affect? A, ovaries, B, testes, C, both, D, neither. It would cause the both. Because even though we know FSH and LH affect the ovaries for ovulation, FSH and LH also affect the testes for what the testes do? Sperm reduction. Because you can have all the over in the world. Without sperm, you don't have a human being. That's why I find a lot of these, uh, these social arguments nowadays. These are people who don't know anatomy and physiology. You have women who say they don't need a man, and men who say they don't need a woman. Okay, and then, okay, then how the heck did you end up on this planet? Alien? Right? We all need each other. Right? And there's all, and now that you've noticed, a lot of things in anatomy and physiology are both what? One side or the other side? Nothing's really in the middle. It's either one side or the other side, and both sides are required. So for this one, gonads, of course, it's testes. Now, how do I break these down, right? Another thing I could do while I'm studying this is like, do I know the functions of each and every one of these? And now you know ovaries and testes, I put that together. Gonads, you put that together in that box, and that box will be labeled as sex hormone. So testes, of course, testosterone. Ovaries, estrogen and progesterone. What happens if you started injecting me with estrogen and progesterone? Like, I start looking like my sister. Right? It goes, then I get some boobs, then I get some hips, then my voice gets a little bit more, just. Upper register, right? Which by the way, I had a, I go, I totally forgot, I had a message from Tiny the other day. Didn't he, I go, uh, I go, uh, uh, for whatever reason, nobody calls me on my cell. Calls me on a web phone. So I'm gonna, uh, I was looking at my web phone at home, and I'm like, what's this? Oh, a message from Brooklyn, New York. I'm like, oh, in Brooklyn. Uh, ooh, has to be one of my brothers. And of course, his voice, because he's a very large man, he's, uh, four hundred pounds plus. He goes, hey, what up, bro? Come on, guy, baby, you coming up here? And I'm like, okay. We call him Mickey Mouse, Minnie Mouse. Right? And he's nothing but Minnie, he's just all sorts of good.
Women produce testosterone as well, does that?
Yeah, everyone has, good question. Everyone has testosterone and estrogen. But you are you, you are ladies because of what? The predominance of estrogen and progesterone. Right? I have estrogen and progesterone, especially right here, in the lovely man bod, uh, fat area right here, because what are the, uh, uh, what is adipose tissue associated with? Uh, estrogen, uh, progesterone. Which of the following glands is located in my thoracic? So, uh, out of these, which one is in my chest? Okay? And of course, answer is thymus. And your thymus, let's review real quick, function of your thymus is what? What does your thymus do for us?
Immune.
Immune system. So you're gonna think what? T cells. Uh, hypothalamus, we already know, homeostasis. Adrenal gland, I want you to think epinephrine, norepinephrine, and cortisol. Right? All the stressors. What's going on? Why do I hear voices?
腺素 regulation.
Why do I hear voices? Is it yours? Why do you hear voices? Is it yours? It's keeping me out.
Is it on Teams? Is somebody on Teams?
Is somebody on Teams and not muted? Little, little. Oh. Uh, uh, Miss, uh, Miss Porter, this is, doesn't contain the lab. We were only in lab last time, I remember. All right, so have a good morning. And shoot me an email if you need anything from lab. This is a review for lecture.
Hi, Rosetta. Okay.
Alrighty. So, uh, adrenal gland, uh, remember, just, uh, just as like, uh, a quick review. You're gonna think what? All the things that stress you out. And remember, you have the, the three stages of being stressed out, right? You have the first stage, which is alert, right? So if someone was trying to run you over with a car, that's what? Immediate stress. So you're gonna think what? Epinephrine, norepinephrine, right? And then, over a long period of time, you're gonna have cortisol. Now, epinephrine, norepinephrine, cortisol, where do we get it from? Your adrenal glands. There's other things that the adrenal glands have, but we're gonna put that in that box. Right? So, because remember, what, when we're going over this, we're not only looking at morning, morning, we're not only looking at what the question answer is, right? If we were in high school, that's the only thing we care about, the answer. But what's more important? It goes, how can the answer remind me other answers? And how can I figure out every which way that I can ask a question? And if you figure out every which way you can ask a question, what happens to the event? It becomes what? It can, becomes easy. Which of the following located above your kidneys? And again, adrenal gland. But what's a better adrenal gland question for us? Is, um. Uh, what's in the medullary area? What's in the cortical area? Now, you look at the word cortical area. Cortical, cortisol, right? So you're gonna think what? Long-term response to stress. And what do we know about cortisol? Does it increase, decrease, or do nothing to my immune system? Decrease. It decreases my immune system, specifically inflammatory. So that's a better question. Where do endocrine glands secrete hormones? Of course, endo means what? Within. Now, what's another, it goes, what's exocrine? Exocrine is what? External. So you already know internal versus external. Remember, grab up things from other lectures because you need to start now integrating them. So we know endocrine. And what was the picture? Remember the picture we saw? What was the endocrine picture we saw? What, um, what gland was it? Pancreas. And the pancreas was secreting incidentin glucagon waste directly into blood. You guys remember that picture? There's a picture of the pancreas, and then it had a blood vessel. Right? Why am I keeping this with my hands? I keep on forgetting, there's people online that need to see my hands. Well, you can see this picture. So could that be a question? Which of the following glands secretes, uh, uh, secretes into a blood vessel? So I could say thyroid, sweat gland, mammary gland, or sebaceous gland. So which one? Now, remember the miracrin, apricin, holocrin? I just gave an example of what? Miracrin, sweat gland, right? Apricin, mammary gland. And holocrin, which is your sebaceous. Isn't, um, the sweat gland, mammary gland, and sebaceous gland? That's all exocrine. That's all things that go where? Out. And everything else that we were talking about in that big chart that we're about to hit in a moment is what? Everything that goes in. And if it goes in, one of the places that it can go in is what? Blood. And that's what we monitor. Let's say if you have, uh, over secretion of something, under secretion of something. If it's an endocrine problem, what will the Department of Endocrinology do? Give you a blood test. Or look inside endo. Okay? Next one, miracrin, apricin, holocrin, we already kind of, uh, did that. And I'm gonna highlight them because they're all what? Exocrine examples. How does the nervous system communicate? Of course, nervous neurotransmitters. Know your neurotransmitters. We already know acetylcholine, norepinephrine, it goes, and GABA, which is gamma amino deuterate acid. But, uh, uh, that's for last, uh, that's for, uh, the last chapter. But remember, the, uh, could it be asked? Because this exam is chapter twelve and thirteen. Twelve talked about neurotransmitters. So quick review regarding neurotransmitters. Acetylcholine, does it turn things on or off? Turn things on. If it turns things on, will it increase sodium? Calcium? How about potassium? Will it increase potassium? No. Potassium will get in, potassium and/or fluoride will get increased if it is what? Something that's negative. So what did we know that was negative? Remember I told you the story about MSG, monosodium glutamate? Right? It's what? GABA. Think GABA, gamma amino deuterate acid, is something that turns things off. It is a neurotransmitter that is inhibitory. And if it's inhibitory, your IPSP or inhibitory postsynaptic response should be what? Increase of either potassium or fluoride. And those are the things that turn things off. Again, more integration. Stuff that you learned from like chapter two, stuff that you learned from like chapter ten, eleven, and twelve, now are coming into play in your final exam.
There's only three neurotransmitters?
Well, there's hundred. But there's one that we talked about in our lecture is just examples. And you're, and you're gonna learn way more examples. And we already looked at some other examples, like serotonin. Right? Uh, um, uh, serotonin is also called five HT. It has to do with dreams. It also has to do with mood, especially depression. Right? Dopamine, you're gonna learn in pharmacology. It also has to deal with what? Um, uh, your heart and your autonomic. There's a whole bunch of things. Remember, we only got five weeks. We show you the classic examples, and then the rest of your career, they start adding on to the examples. Endocrine system, we already know that's inside. Characteristic of the endocrine system, what's so special about the endocrine system? It is slow. Right? But let's add here. Uh, the effects are long-term. That's what's so special about the endocrine system. Remember, your nervous system is very fast. I poke you in the face, when do you feel it? The second I poke you in the face. The second I stop poking you in the face, do you feel it? Do you feel it anymore? Nope. So that's, uh, uh, that's nervous system. With the endocrine system, let's pick at random, growth hormone. Growth hormone takes forever in a day to take, to tell your muscles, your bones, and your adipose tissue, hey, let's grow a couple inches. Right? And but then, once it tells it to do that, what happened? You start growing, and you don't grow sperm. It doesn't happen over a week then. It happens to a course of what? Several months to years. So think endocrine, long-term, but the response is slower. And as a little side note, that we always talked about in actually two different lectures already, is that endocrine is also responsible for telling, telling you when you're full. And you're gonna, we're gonna learn that when we're in the gastrointestinal system. The signals for satiety, the signals that say that you're full is endocrine. That's why I always now do the, um, um. I do this technique every time I eat, especially if I eat formally, like in a restaurant or something. I still wanna eat in a restaurant. I order the entree, I eat only half. Then I talk and BS with my family for twenty to thirty minutes. Because why? I need my satiety center to do what? Catch up. Last night, that happened. Oh. It goes, I, uh, I had, um, uh, just a couple of pieces of rice and a couple of pieces of, uh, uh, pork back. Right? Oh. But can I eat all of them? I can easily do it. But what did I do? I took the serving, cut it in half. Took the rice, even cut that in half. I ate that, and then what did I do? BS with, with family and friends? What happened after thirty minutes? I was still hungry, but other people ate my other half. Right? So now, it goes, what was my calorie intake? Instead of four thousand, five thousand calories last night, it would be like, what, around eighteen hundred, two thousand?
Yeah, but they were still hungry.
Yeah, but I'm not as hungry as I was. That will force me to do what? Eat more and overeat. And that's exactly what happens in buffets. Right? You remember the story we talked about? You're in the buffet, right? You're eating. Your stomach is already distended. You're already having trouble breathing. But you look at the dessert tray and go, that cheesecake, though. You know, I got some room. No, you don't. Right? Everything physically is telling you what? Stop. But what did your brain say? No, I think I'm still good. Right? Then what happens after? You have the cheesecake, then you're in the car like, oh, I'm gonna fill up, I feel sick. Right? And that's what buffet does to you if you're out of control. Right? But over the last couple of years, now that I eat a buffet, what do I do? It goes, I eat one plate. I used to have a competition with my sister to see how many plates I can eat. I now have one plate, then eat half of that. And I can tell you, after talking to your family and BSing, do I need the other plate? I don't. I go, uh, I, I usually take a whole bowl, not a plate, a bowl of snow crab legs. Can't do that anymore. I just took a plate, ate half. You'll feel much better. Because the endocrine system is slow and the effects are long-term. Now. Now we're gonna go into what? Function. So out of these. Which one that, which one that literally means stop growing? Somatostatin. Soma means body, statin, or stasis means what? You must stay right here. Right?
So with the top one, for number ten, do you vote?
Uh, yeah. So it's our long-term. Forgot that, I highlighted that. So of course, the answer would be, of course, B. Uh, twelve, which of the, it goes, which of the above promotes milk letdown reflex? Which tells, which tells my memories to do so?
Prolactin.
Prolactin. Because pro means what? Like, you know, like, uh, pro can either mean be, before or in front of something, but pro actually means what? Also, I'm for it. Right? If, uh, you, you know, if you're a pro-education lobbyist, you're what? You're for education. So what does prolactin do? And those of you who are babies, you know that this milk, uh, uh, when the milk comes, you have any control over it? No, you don't. Right? Um, so what could activate prolactin? Well, um, not only the fact that maybe you need more milk, and maybe it's time for feeding, but, uh, do you think emotion? You're thinking about your kid? Your shirt gets wet? Or you hear a baby cry? You think, it reminds me of your kid, and your shirt gets wet? Uh, my wife, with her second child, was like that all the time. She was like, damn it! Like, all day. And I'm like, and they go, how's this? Stop thinking about your kid. That's what I do. Makes my life so much better. Which of the following is gonadotropin? And we already talked about gonads, right? And so you're gonna think what? Right? You're gonna, you're gonna think both. Because even though FSH and LH. We typically, um, uh, relate that to the ovaries and ovulation. They're also, remember, there's the other part of the partners. You need the male part, so of course, FSH and LH, and, uh, like we stated earlier, everyone has progesterone. Everyone has estrogen. Everyone has testosterone, but in different level. That's why both male and female have FSH and LH. But that's weird, because do I have a follicle? Do I have an ovary? Do I have an ovum? No, I don't. And luteinizing, uh, lutin is talking about, um, ovaries as well. But in the male, what's our, uh, what's, uh, uh, what's my gonad and my sexual reproductive organ is? Testes. So gonadotropin releasing hormones, and the female LH and FSH promote ovulation. The egg to come out day fourteen in a twenty-eight day menstrual cycle. But in males, what will it do? It will promote, um, sperm production. And so that we can have, uh, you know, more people on the planet. Which of the following hormones deals with metabolism? So. Metabolism, think what? Thyroid. So it could be what? TSH? T3 or T4? Okay? Remember, T3, T4 are in the thyroid directly. But where is the TSH? Where do we get TSH from? And that's a question. That's a next question, because every time you see a hormone, what are the three questions that you always have to ask yourself? One, where'd it come from? Two, is it a primary or secondary messenger? And three, goes, where is the target tissue? And of course, related to three, what does it do to the target tissue? So remember, hypothalamus, you're gonna think what? All the releasing hormone stuff. And then you have, uh, the, um, the other glands, and then of course, T3, T4, from the thyroid response to thyroid stimulating hormone, what does T3 and T4 do to my metabolism? So if I have too much TSH, T4, what happens to my metabolism? It goes up. So the metabolism, that means what? Increase heart rate, increase blood pressure, increase everything, increase breakdown, um, um, increase weight loss. But if everything is down, if my T3, T4 is down, guess what, guess what can you have? Decreased blood pressure, increased weight loss, I mean, weight gain. Right? Uh, don't you think you might even have some symptoms that, like? And that's, and that's another argument me and my, uh, mom have with a lot of other physicians. Are you really looking at the source of the problem, or are you just giving meds just to how my patient feels or wants? Or are you just giving meds just to how my patient feels or wants? When I learned that, when I was a physician, I, I, my first year, I started realizing that you just give in to the patient because that's what they want. Right? Or the patient won't come back to you. Right? Which is a problem, don't you think? Which of the following hormones tell my kidneys to stop urinating? ADH, anti-diuretic hormone. Now, what's a better question for your level? Right? How the, how do the kidneys stop urine? Remember, wherever salt goes, water goes. We already learned that from chapter two. Right? We don't have to explain ourselves anymore regarding toxicity, hypertension, hypotension. So now, we're at the next level. So if my kidneys are holding all the salt, where will all the water go? It'll be held in. Right? So that's what anti-diuretic hormone actually does. It tells the kidneys, stop secreting salt, namely sodium. So if you retain your sodium, what happens to the water? You're retaining water. When does ADH come out? You're in the desert. Right? You don't have any water. Your body's gonna want to conserve water. So ADH will be increased and then the kidneys will hold the salt. That's a better question. Instead of stop urination, because you guys did know what anti-diuretic is. Now, let's look at the word diuresis. Also known as a water pill, right? You're diuretic, you guys heard of diuretics? It's with hypertension. If I give my patient a diuretic, what are they doing all day? Every fifteen minutes, and I'm not exaggerating. Every fifteen minutes, they're gonna be peeing. They're gonna be pissed off, but what's gonna happen? Your kidneys and the diuretic are doing what? Throwing out salt like no one's business. So what will follow? Water. When you pee a lot, what happens to the, your pressure? There's less water in your system, what happens? Right? Uh, your uh, blood pressure will go down. And ladies, remember the story we talked about on your menstrual cycle? Do you want to retain more water? If you do, eat something very salty. It'll retain more water, your cramps will be much worse. Did that experiment in my forties. It goes, ah, I'm not playing today. And I go, here, how about your chips? And he goes, you told me I could eat chips. And they go, let's just see what happens. Of course, he's like, chomp, chomp, just grass juice. Chomp, chomp, chomp. You're watching uh, uh, whatever, at man movie, whatever. Right? You chop, chop, chop. Then later, oh! And I go, what's happening, Belle? She goes, the cramp, it hurts. And I'm like, and I go, experiment done. And she's like, and I told her, wherever salt goes? And she goes, water goes. And I go, where's all the water now? And he goes, it's in my uterus. And I'm like, that's right, that's why it hurts. And so do you think that's also in nursing? That's how we control the water of my patient? If I know where the salt is, then what, what will I also know? Where the water is going? And where do I want the water in my patient? Do I want my patient dehydrated? No. Do I want my patient over hydrated? No. So the nursing staff better make sure that my patient uh, sodium levels are where? In the middle. Which of the following deals with calcium? Think this another color. What's calcium? Of course, calcitonin. What, what's the other calcium? Parathyroid hormone. So let's take a breather on a better question. On how uh, we can ask uh, uh, calcitonin and uh, uh, parathyroid question. Let's do this. And of course, I'll, uh, all this we're talking about here, um, I'll make available since I'm making changes. I'll, I'll swap out, uh, or I'll add this as a, uh, as an addenda. So regarding calcitonin and parathyroid hormone, of course, I could ask, where goes um, I could be, that, remember, that's one set of questions. So of course, the answer for calcitonin would be of course thyroid. But I would put something that looks like what? Thyroid. Something that looks like, do you see what I'm doing? And then a total distractor. Uh, moods. So do you see, and of course, uh, the answer, uh, of course, is what? Thyroid. Because we already talked about that. Now, do you see what I did to create distractors? I always pick something that sounds like it. Right? And then I pick something that totally off the line. So while you're debating which one, thymus or hypothalamus, what, what, what does a small percentage of you guys do? You quit and go, oh, he's trying to trick me and then put my knee over. You guys draw, but that's what you do. I've been watching it for twenty years. Just an amazement. But you know what? The same thing. That's why I practice. I know how, uh, goes, I know how I pay tests. And all the stuff, all the funky stuff that I do wrong, what do I do? I train that out of me. Next one, of course, parathyroid hormone is when we're what? Parathyroid.
But that's for absorption, right?
Uh, what?
The parathyroid hormone?
No, we're gonna do that next. Right now, let's, let's ask ourselves, I'll remember the, the three questions we have to ask ourselves over every hormone. What's the source? So what's the source of your parathyroid hormone? Parathyroid. What's the source of calcitonin? Thyroid. Now, let's not talk about the function and target issue. So I can make that question. Uh, when does calcitonin get released? When your calcium is high? When your calcium is low? When you have, uh, when your calcium is at normal level? It has nothing to do with calcium. So that's how I always make a coin question, right? The left or right? It's always either left, right, normal, or some ridiculous thing. Right? Or left, right, both, neither. Right? That's your basic, basic cake question. So, right now, you have to ask ourselves, right? And I'll put it here in parentheses. What does calcium, what does calcitonin do? Calcitonin goes, uh, is, uh, is in response to what? High calcium levels. So what is the function of calcitonin? To do what? Lower your calcium level. So the function of calcitonin is lower your calcium. So if that's the function, that's the end. When do I wanna lower my calcium? When there's too much calcium. Right? Makes sense. But you know calcium, when you start doing calcitonin, parathyroid, calcitonin, parathyroid. So now I'm gonna make this what? Make this a different color. So calcitonin, calcitonin. Calcitonin is released when calcium is high. Because what is the function of your calcitonin? Is to lower your calcium. Now that we got that down, can I ask the exact opposite question? Get ready for that one. When does PTH get released? And? Same as above. Happy? So we have to ask ourselves, PTH, remember I drew the picture on the side? Right? The bone and the kidney, right? And their GI, right? What is the impetus or what's the starting point? Uh, when uh, or the function of PTH? The function of PTH is to do what? Increase your calcium. So of course, when PTH gets released, what's it in response to? The calcium is what? Both. Now, let's not, let's, let us ask now the target, um, uh, target organ question. Now, you could do this with each and every one of the hormones, which actually we kinda did already. But calcitonin versus PTH is one of the tricky ones. Now, what can I ask us? Uh, what is the response of uh, your bone to PTH? So let's move this down so we can see.
The parathyroid only has to deal with calcium?
Yeah. So right now, remember the picture that we drew? We now know from the previous question that the function of parathyroid hormone is to increase your calcium. So remember the picture that we drew on the board? How do I get more calcium out of bone? I have to break it down, don't I? So you're gonna think what? Breakdown of bone, and which ones of breakdown of bone? Oxytocin. Now, do you think I could uh, ask the same question regarding is, uh, what is the response of your um, intestines? PTH. Do you think I could do the same thing? Uh, increase absorption? Increase absorption? Nothing to do. So I have now another PTH question. And what is the function of my PTH? Let's go back to this. It want, wanna increase my calcium. So in order to increase my calcium, what do my intestines do? Are they gonna throw it out in the poops? No, they're gonna do what? They're gonna absorb it, right? So it will be what? Increase absorption. Same thing with the kidneys, right? Instead of running intestines, I put kidneys in there? Because isn't that what the kidneys do? We already learned from eight years, the kidneys can retain protein. The kidneys can also retain calcium. The kidneys can also retain potassium. There's a whole bunch of them. Okay, so that's the, that's the calcitonin versus PTH. Now you can see every which way I could ask it. This is a nice juicy question. I saw this on, I saw this, I saw this on a review for MCAT. And I'm like, ooh, you do your stuff. And you could see how difficult it is because how many jumps did you take to get through it? But do you see what we did? When you do question analysis, you break down the questions, you add on to them. Then you can figure out every which way the test can mess with you. And now you figure out every which way the test can mess with you. How confident are you going into that test? Very. Right? And what happens to test anxiety when you're greater prepared? It doesn't go away. You don't want the test anxiety to go away. But it, it decreases significantly. Right? So uh, which of the following deals with the contraction uh, of your uterus during labor? So let's change this and is it uh, now the contraction of, uh, and then the follow-up question is, uh, is the function of oxytocin? So let's deal with these. Contraction of the uterus during labor. Is that positive feedback, negative feedback, or neutral? Positive. Because the only, it is the only in this lecture example of positive feedback. Because when do we want baby out? We want it out. And also, not only baby has to go out, placenta has to always go out too. So it keeps on contracting. Now, what's the function of oxytocin, which is the contraction of the uterus? It's gonna do what? Increase uterine contraction. Can I combine these two? Make it a question? Sure. Right? Instead of saying contraction of the uterus, which of the, goes, which of the following is what? The function of oxytocin during labor? Is it positive, negative, and neutral feedback? Now you see, it's a question that did what? Jumps. If you didn't know what oxytocin was, if you didn't know positive versus negative feedback is, you're dead, you're dead in the water.
So it's the opposite.
Yeah. So do you see how twenty-two, twenty-two, I can put them together if I was an extra special? If I was in a mood one day?
Well.
Which I could be, never know with me. Because uh, um, the mental disease is kind of fun. Right? Which is the following neurotransmitter? So we already know this, right? That's what? Norrepi. Remember adrenaline, I'm, I won't ask an adrenaline question because that's, again, that's not the American um, uh, uh, nomenclature, name. It's epinephrine, so I wouldn't.
But is that the same thing?
Yeah, adrenaline. Yeah, adrenaline, uh, because that's what adrenaline is. Um, the British call it adrenaline. Uh, Europeans call it adrenaline. We call it what? Epinephrine. And what does adrenaline do? It's sympathetic, memetic. And that's why, what does cocaine and methamphetamines all have in common? They increase what? Epinephrine. Right? Because and
Euphoria?
Does, it's part of this euphoria, but also does, uh, because remember when we talked about why I love getting scared? Because it's what? Increase norrepi, increase epi, but naturally. Right? Uh, think about the last time you got scared. You got scared really fast. And it wasn't exhilarating. Like, I can't tell you, uh, the last few of the screams, it was so awesome. Uh, well, it, they kinda opened up, uh, even during the pandemic. You know how awesome it is, just like watching zombies with masks? And they, they did the, um, the medical biohazard theme, right? So they had zombies and, and people in biohazard suits chasing you. Think about the last time you got chased. Maybe your kid, you went bad. Wasn't that exhilarating? Like being hunted? It's scary, but you're like, me and Duke couldn't stop laughing. We were like, but we were also scared at the same time. And then of course, we lost the baby. I go, yo, listen. He was like, I don't, you had him. And then now it becomes genuine fear. Thank goodness, and this is very vocal, you know, there's a face up, all hair, eh, eh. And he loves shredding leaves and feel the screams. He was like maze, but there's like leaves and all this stuff. So he was near a corner, eh. And of course, the zombie, ah! And Duke was like, I was gonna save him from the zombie. And I'm like, Duke was like, I'll punch him out. Do not hit the actors, they're just actors. I saw this one lady, totally slapped the dude. And she was like, oh, sorry, sorry. She was so into it because the, I think, try it out, go to haunted house. Or something like that. Another really cool haunted house, and then long branch, you know, it's this big castle. And the actors are really cool. And they don't really jump scare you, they message you. And then, so they do stuff like, if you're in the room hiding, you're like, and then you're also scratching, you know? And again, the epinephrine, right? The norrepi. You, and you mentioned that euphoria. Euphoria is what? That feeling you get in your heart, right? But fear can also do that. That's why I'm kind of excited if I go to Anaheim next month. Right now, I'm worried, nervous, but I can imagine when I'm at Disneyland, when I'm walking through the gates, when they're getting the ticket, and my life now has fast pass. Because, see, when you wait, at least you wait, you have some time. Fast pass, you could be, you could be on the line of fifty, twenty minutes. That's not a lot of time, like mentally to prepare myself.
That's two hours, three hours.
Yeah. Um, and oh, by the way, next little tidbit. If you plan it and then you schedule all your fast pass and you put it on the app, your whole day would be like twenty minutes, twenty minutes, twenty minutes, twenty minutes, twenty minutes. It's the coolest thing. We did that the last time we went to Disney.
World.
World.
Florida?
Florida. World is Florida, right? I was like, because I was used to Disney that when I was a kid, you're like there for two hours. And then you make, you make lifelong friendships with the people next to you. You start talking about everything. Yeah, that's funny, my mom was a bitch too. And now, the really cool thing is people have their phones. People play that game, uh, uh, it's like, uh, sad stories. Like, and there's a word and you hold it up and people like, or whatever, we're doing stuff. I'll, I'll Oh, oh, we have our phone.
Oh, heads up.
Yeah, yeah, we have our phone, and we had a dance party, because I have my DJ app on my phone. And we were all like Pirates of the Caribbean going, and then it was like, oh, over here, right? And everybody in the Pirates of the Caribbean, all the parents, it was like three o'clock in the afternoon, so they had a little drink again, right? So everyone was doing Jack style. Imagine an entire boat of people like, talking like K. Fletcher, I, it was hilarious. It was probably the best time I, I went there when I was a kid, I thought it was stupid. And it's a small world, I can't go in.
It's so annoying, you know?
No, it's very trippy and very, and, and my, my daughter, like, she's part of that, like, you know, she's in high school, so she had like a lot of that wolf culture in her. I'm trying to get her, this is incredibly racist, and I'm like, shut up, Eric, I'm trying to enjoy, there's this trick in here. None of bourbon in this cup, so you gotta get through this thing, right? But man, going, I, I now see why adults go to this Disney stuff, and now they have Super Mario Land or something like that. I am so psyched because you know I love gaming, you know I love gaming, so I'm gonna be jumping around with a bunch of stuff. And you put this a watch, and you actually gain in the real world, so I actually have to like.
Are you guys going there? Aren't they making like a Mario Kart thing somewhere in the world?
Oh, we always, it goes, oh, every time we go to Alavan and drive, it turns into Mario Kart. We start throwing stuff at each other, right? Uh, last time, we got kicked out of the Alavan down the road, because we were throwing water bottles at each other. But that was my boy Chris, he started it, and I had to finish it. It was to the point, my husband, he gave me a helmet at somebody, and so they were like, yeah, yeah, you five, I'm like, sorry, man. Again, we're all in our forties and fifties, but we are, men are essentially children. What's the difference with cortisol? All right? Decrease, and what is the, what is the response of cortisol? What's it in response to? Long-term stress. The epinephrine, nor epi is what? Short-term, a truck tried to hit you, right? You got jumpscared, right? But imagine if I keep on jumpscaring you, it's gonna, it's gonna take its toll. For this one, insulin glucagon, of course, it's a, that's easy. That's the LPM question. Insulin glucagon, yeah, thank this. Well, what is a better insulin glucagon question? So when do you release insulin? Of course, after a big meal. And when do you release glucagon? Right? Because, um, let's make it a better question. Make it a better question.
But would people want?
Yeah, but then, then, then it becomes, then it becomes the chicken versus the egg. So then it's gonna, so what's a better question design, right?
You know when you're fasting?
Yeah, so you're fasting, right? You haven't eaten in about ten hours, that's when glucagon gets released. Right?
Let me answer that again.
Yeah, I told you guys, I do that because it hurts, it hurts my brain, like, then I forget, did I put the answer? So I always. You haven't eaten in about ten hours? Five minutes after eating, eat that all. All right? I spell that correctly? Right? Uh, so you know, this is what? A lot of fat, right? And I just ate it, so that's like a big meal, right? And it was, you haven't eaten in about ten hours. Now, that's a, that's an easier question. Uh, um, what is the response? Of your, um, what is the response of your liver? After thirteen hours of no food? Better question, right? Your liver will break down glycogen to make glucose. Your liver will break down glycogen to make people. Your liver will go break down, and you will break down. Now, of course, that's of course a detractor or whatever. So what was the key thing to prolong fasting? Greater than ten to twelve hours, and ten is already pushing it, especially if you're, you have an older patient. So fifteen hours of no food, what are we not talking about? You're not you when you're hungry. It's ketones, and remember, they're not good because there are two things. They're acidic, and they're neurotoxic. Two things you don't want your body to have excess of. But that's what happens when you fast too long.
How people then doing this ketos, like, in ketosis and.
Yeah, that's what bothers me. That's what bothers me as a physician and a chemist. People who are consciously putting themselves in a cathodic state. Um, what do you call that? The fasting that you do in intermittent fasting, you should not go more than ten to fourteen hours. Fourteen is actually pushing it. And the person who's gonna go fourteen hours is a young person. Do you think I'm gonna tell fifty, sixty, hey, bro, don't eat, don't eat for fifteen hours? Then that person's gonna end up in my ER.
A lot of people are doing that, and they're.
Yeah, yeah, don't do that, that's not a good idea. And now you know why it's not a good idea. Not because I'm a chemist, not because I'm an M D. It's because now you know anatomy, physiology, now you know what the liver does when you do not eat. It makes ketones, it makes bad things, because why? Your body is screaming to you, eat something. Now, do you have to eat like a ton of food? That's the other, that's the other thing that a lot of these bad diets don't understand, right? If you know how your body processes food, then do you have to process an entire meal? Remember, I told you the strategy that my wife does? She never eats a full meal. She eats these little things during the course of the day, right? And it's never a full meal, for the twenty-seven, for the twen, it is much better for you, because doesn't it buy time? For your body to process it and make the, and then, yeah, but, but just imagine if you're just snacking healthy and intermittently all throughout the day, instead of eating one huge meal at the end of the day, or one huge meal at the beginning of the day, right? It'll be much better for you. And that's why she looks and acts like she does, right? And she definitely had stroke in her family, she definitely had hypertension and obesity in her family. Then why, out of all her brothers and sisters, she still looks like that and she's in the fifties? Because, again, exercise, dieting, and also her head's on right. She doesn't like this job, this is what my mother does, well, I'll find something new. And I go, uh, we're gonna get broke, she goes, we're always broke. And I go, I think you gotta go back to where I know, and she goes, no, I don't think so. She, and I'm like, yeah, but you might not pay the water bill, and she goes, okay, this one. And I'm like, that's not how it works, but okay, uh, and then she'll go, I'll get you more gigs. And then she'll give you more gigs, and then, and then, and then, cool. But then I start wondering, like, why am I working seven days a week? And you know what? Promotions, going out to each of the bars and street markets, and I hate doing that, so she does that, kudos to her. And then she comes out, and you know, all DJs have bar tabs, then her and her friend eat up like that. That's what they did last night, they came in, and, uh, I was like, oh, that's my appetizer, her and her friend, like, who needs to be? But she's the manager, that's what she does. Oh, yeah, she always negotiates my tab and never tells me what it is. She's like, okay, you've got, um, I'll get you like a small Diet Coke, and some chips. And then I found out later, oh, I have a forty-dollar tab, right? And I'm like.
And I ate chips?
And I ate like, uh, two dollars' worth of food. Upregulation, what does that mean? Up means what? It goes increase the receptors, right? And downregulation, of course. Now, what's a better question? Notice I keep on mentioning, what's a better question, right? Because don't you think I could relate that to insulin and glucagon? So if my patient has a very poor diet, don't you think there'll be a chronic upregulation of their insulin receptor? And if you keep on using something or abusing something, what happens to it? It breaks it. And when your insulin receptor breaks due to massive or prolonged upregulation of your insulin receptors, you'll get insulin resistance, and then you'll get something called diabetes mellitus type two. So whoever is doing diabetes mellitus type two, that's something to look into. Mechanism hormone control goes, now, the normal mechanism for hormone secretion is always what? Right? Negative feedback. That's the norm. Remember, oxytocin is the exception, okay? And oxytocin, for the following glands, control negative feedback. Of course, negative feedback, we already know, that's part and parcel of your hypothalamus. Hypothalamus, think what? Homeostasis. It's controlling, it's controlling everything. This is easy, uh, targets for growth hormone, of course, is bone, fat, and muscle. That's an easy one. Prolactin, memory gland. And remember, you have your adrenal medulla and your adrenal cortex. Think adrenal cortex, think what? Cortex, cortisol. Adrenal medulla, think epinephrine, nor epinephrine. That's a, that's a better question. Prolactin, of course, ovaries, I like that, that's easy, I mean, not ovaries, uh, memory gland, that's an easy one. Target, again, cognitive ACTH, right? Uh, of course, adrenal cortex, that's right in the name, but, uh, let's make better questions. These questions are not optimal. So what is the target, or it goes, uh, um? Hmm.
Do you know medulla? Well, now, we got.
Well, I already asked a medulla versus cortex question, so, uh, let's keep it. Well, did I mention it?
Can you, I'm sorry, um, I know the glands, they were two, right? And the over the, they go over the kidney, right? Adrenal.
Yeah, so that's the one that looks like a little A. That, that's the one that looks like a little A, like, like that, like this? Now, so, yeah, so adrenal means what? Add on top of renal, which contains your kidneys. Now, let's, let's write this down here so we can design a better question. So what's a better question? Because you know ACTH, it's in the name, right? So what's, uh, what's a better thing? Oopsies. What's a better question? What's a better thing? And of course, adrenal cortex, cortex, think what? Cortisol. And then one of the other choices, epinephrine, nor epinephrine. And of course, adrenal cortex, the answer would be cortisol. And we already know what cortisol does. So do you think I can add, ask another question that will make you jump a little bit further? What? So it'll be like increased inflammation, uh, secondary to primary. That could be it. Now, what does epinephrine and nor epinephrine do? Well, let's do, let's do another question that's related to that. What adrenal hormone gets released from the adrenal medulla, medullary? And it would be like what? Epinephrine, nor epinephrine, at the, at both. Of course, the answer is, uh, both. And what can we do here as notes? We can add. Epinephrine and nor epinephrine in response to acute or alert level stress. So acute means what? Just happened, right now. Almost got hit by a truck, remember, Susie? Almost got hit by a truck, that happened right now. So what got released from her adrenal gland? Specifically, her adrenal medulla, epinephrine and nor epinephrine. Because we needed, the function of epinephrine and nor epinephrine is to do what? Increase your sympathetic memetic, that means increase your heart rate, blood pressure, oxygen intake. Luteinizing hormone, we already talked about that.
Sorry, what increases, oh, what?
Epinephrine and nor epinephrine. Because what happens in acute stress? About to get hit by a truck. Don't you need oxygen and glucose really fast? Get your muscles working so you don't get hit by the truck. And that happens in milliseconds. That should amaze you, how quickly the, um, light can change and light can escalate. And your adrenal medulla has a golden system for that.
This is activate our sympathetic.
Yeah, that's part of your sympathetic nervous system. And that's the reason why people love cocaine and meth, because it upgrades what? Epinephrine and nor epinephrine, it upregulates epinephrine and nor epinephrine receptors. That's what cocaine does to you. So that euphoria, the exhilaration of the empowerment, the exhilaration of fear, all in what? All in one bump. And that's why people also not only physically get addicted to it, they also get what? Mentally addicted to it. Target of luteinizing hormone, follicle stimulating hormone, uh, let's think of a question, ovaries, uh, muscle, uh, bone, and, uh, that's another target too. And of course, FSH, LH, think gonads. Right? LH, FSH, think gonads, think ovaries. Circadian rhythm, that's your day-night cycle. So this is a double jumper. You have to know what your day-night cycle is, right? Which is also related to your RAS, which is your reticular activating system, or your sleep cycle. So day-night cycle, circadian rhythm, it's your pineal gland. We've only been in this room, right? Not even, not a little bit over, it's already disoriented, that we don't see the sun. Now, imagine your job as a nurse, you're in fourteen hours, and you're in a place where you haven't seen the sun. Right? You don't know what's going on outside. So do you think prolonged, prolonged living of that, of that lifestyle will affect your pineal gland? You also notice that it's called seasonal affective disorder. When does seasonal affective disorder, SAD, happen? It happens when what? Usually in most northern states where they have the seasons, and when the daytime gets worse, it's shorter. We've also seen that SAD in places like parts of Alaska and parts of the north in South Pole, where there is no night. I had a friend of mine, uh, he's, uh, he's an aquatic engineer. He's essentially a very well-paid plumber. He puts on diving gear and does plumber work, but like underwater and like freezing temperatures and that kind of thing. He said he used to go poo all the time when there was no day or night, because his pineal gland would get what? All what? Screwed. So think pineal gland, day-night, circadian. Same as above, so what can you do? We could pick this. Oh, man, how do I do that? I love being not smart. Good, all right. The answer to this, of course, pineal gland. And let's do same as the above, so can I do thymus? Uh, hypothalamus. Let's make up a word. You guys are liking up the words that I make up, hypothyminus. And of course, not to say it's a hypothyminus, right? So you're gonna think immune function, uh, you're gonna think, uh, thymus, remember? Remember, T cells. T cells, especially your T helper, or this, or it's called CDP cell, that is implicated in HIV. We'll talk more about that, uh, next term. Now, what happens? Body clock, and no, we don't care. And let me call this file. Uh, so Russian bank modified, uh, oh, six oh three, two thousand twenty-three. I save as, underplace, all these documents.
Are you done recording?
Uh, I'll be done in a second, two thousand twenty-three. And I'll put that. Let's put that in, uh, your announcements, where at the announcements of this, so you have both versions. So under chapter thirteen, live review, I am putting it in there. This file. Announcement, see? All with no paper. I didn't have to do anything. Uh, that's it. So it's in announcements, it's, uh, it's in there. Alrighty? Any questions? Comments? Recipes? Uh, if not, if you wanna still hang around, um, I'm gonna do a, uh, a brief overview of what does unit three and unit four laboratory, uh, exam look like for next week? So, um, that will be like a little extra that you can look at this video. So let's switch gears and go into the dashboard and laboratory, and we're gonna look at announcements. And we're gonna look at, remember, it's unit three and unit four. So let's look at did I not put unit three study material? Okay, I guess I can't do this. Because I didn't put unit three, but I'll make a video probably over the weekend. Probably when I lose today's common cry in my beer that I can't drink. Alright, and let me, for those of you who are online, thanks for playing. Uh, hold up.
Did you do the practice, uh, you put it under the first three-four unit? Unit four study material, did you?
Yeah, but what's unit three?
Oh, I thought that one was, uh.
Oh, is it everything?
I have no idea.
Oh, let me, let's look. Let's look before we leave because maybe I combined it.
This stuff?
Yeah, maybe I combined it because, uh, you know, it's one of those late night things where I'm like, really? So, okay, I'm in my meeting, I'm in Teams, what's going on? I'm still recording. Oh, there you go. Alright. Those of you still online, uh, can you see this?
Yes, I can see it.
Alright.
Yes, I can see it.
Alrighty, so what can I easily do with this? Right? Can I easily take this? Let's, let's do it right now, just for giggles. I could take it, I could copy it, right? And you know, uh, Microsoft Word always has these like Paint 3D and snippet tools. And then I paste it. And then what can I do? I can take an eraser and start doing what? And then I could start doing A, B, C, D, E, F, G? Yep. So you have my picture. So what can you do? Make up your own quiz. Or let's say you're ultra lazy like I am. What can you do? Can you look it up? Right? Brain quiz, look at images, and, oh, look at that. I could do that all day, right? You do this all day. Right? And also, there are other online ones that you can do as well. And you can see this, you can do some coloring if you want. Right? You can do that. So of course, you need to know all your lobes. You need to know, of course, the donut, thalamus, and underneath it around here, hypothalamus, your cataractary gland, of course, this is a little bit part of your temporal lobe, cerebrum, adilab.
Can you point out where the hypothalamus is again?
Hypothalamus, remember? Your thalamus is here. Hypo would be like around here.
Oh.
Because it's what? Underneath or hypo. I mean, and of course, limbic lobe, also known as your cingulate gyrus. Right? That is about emotion. Now, remember, for laboratory, since we switched gears, only thing about identification, it's like ninety percent of nothing. It's not almost all of them. So do I care at this point when, uh, about function? No, I just wanna know where stuff is. That's it. Next one, same thing. I can make this A, B, C, D, or use this one. This one, right? Now, how could I do this? A, B, C, D, E, F, G. Where's the umami? Middle, bitter, sour side. And yeah, uh, salty extends to the sides, but, um, sweet and salty, always the tip of the tongue. Here, it's always a both A and D here. And of course, your umami would be this area right here. There you go, ear. Oh, this is lovely picture. And I gave you the answer. How lazy am I? How lazy am I gonna be, right? This, I'm just gonna put this, I'm just, I'm just gonna put this on there and just go identify, uh, identify three. Identify two. Identify twelve. Right?
Just get four or five.
And of course, look, whoever made this was really clever. Craneal nerve what? Eight. So this is your vestibular cochlear nerve. But could I be vicious and go, hey, where's the vestibular arm of your vestibular cochlea at? Of course, here, because your cochlea, think what? The conch shell, that's where I hear. So this is hearing, and this is balance. And here's my semicircular canal. Eyeball, same thing. Lovely. Like I said, I don't be lazy. I'm not gonna do this. Oh, by the way, I don't know why I didn't put one, two, uh, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna put them in. You know these structures. One is your ciliary body, two is your suspensory ligament, uh, uh, three is your, um, iris, four, of course, is lens. I don't know. That's weird. Okay, but you guys could figure this out.
But what's two again?
Uh, two, suspensory ligaments, remember from anatomical table? Did I put it? Oh, here it is.
You did six first.
Whoa, what's up here? Someone doesn't, someone doesn't know numbers.
So what, one?
One was.
One was ciliary body. Two, suspensory ligament. Three is your iris, the color part of your eye. Right? You can see where there's a little brown here. Four, of course, is your lens. Five is the pupil. Six, cornea. Seven, right? Uh, well, seven is aqueous humor, right? Eight is, of course, the whole entire chamber, anterior chamber, right? Uh, don't have to know what nine is, that's just a little extra, you don't need to know that. And, uh, what are the layers we need to know? Of course, the innermost layer seventeen, retina layer. And, uh, fifteen is the outermost layer, so that's gotta be your sclera. And then the middle layer, number sixteen, is your choroid. So to review, seventeen, retina layer, sixteen, choroid, and fifteen, sclera. Uh, fourteen, of course, is, well, fourteen and ten, depending on how you look at it, is, uh, posterior chamber, vitreous humor. Thirteen is your fovea centralis. Eleven is your blind spot, your optic disc. And twelve, of course, is cranial nerve two. Right? So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna modify this document, but, uh, we went over all the answers here. And I'm gonna tell you right now, this is the picture I'm gonna use. Because like I said, I'm lazy, I don't wanna find another picture.
You said you could either.
Ten could be, ten and fourteen are kinda like the same thing. It was kinda like eight and seven. But you know what I'm gonna do? I'll put in parentheses, uh, what is the liquid? So in here in the front, it's what? Aqueous humor? The water. And if it's here in the back, it is vitreous humor, the gel, or the gel. And of course, the retina layer, they're all colored yellow because it's nervous tissue, it's a receptor. Right? And of course, all the receptors are rods and cone. And that's the worst I could do to you regarding, uh, unit four. Now, unit three, where the heck did I put my unit three stuff, man? I must be slipping. Oh, here it is. Unit three study material. Yeah, I gotta go find it. Wait a minute, maybe I have, maybe I have it in my files here. And I just was, would miss. Uh, lab. Unit three, no, I gotta find it. I gotta find it, it's on my computer. On my desk. But I'll put it in. But essentially, what's unit three? What was the big thing in unit three? All the muscles. And which, by the way, if you look at uh, uh, unit three anatomage, or you can look at the video, but if you look at the final anatomage checkoff sheet, it has the list of all the muscles, all the parts, all the parts of the brain you should know. And it's already on the sheet. I will not deviate from that list. So that's a list for anatomage. Don't you think that should be the list for all the muscles you need to know? So can you find a muscle picture somewhere and practice those? Yeah, but I'll put my, my muscle pics in there. I'm just trying to remember where do I put it? I don't feel it. Alright, with that being said, uh, that concludes this, uh, lovely session. Thanks for playing, and I'll see y'all on Tuesday unless I win the lottery, and then I will totally ghost you. Like I would do my family. I would leave my family, but I don't like them. Where, how, where's the off-line number, Denver? Teams? Alright, Ms. Alejandra, uh, Ms. Rosetta, thanks for stopping by. I am now signing off.
Thank you, Dr. Arias. Thank you so much for the review.
Don't let the electronic door hit you on the way out. Bye-bye.